Twenty-five, she's...
I don't know if that's...
Oh, okay. So, what did you hear on dramatics length? Is this in our face or in the... We're probably... Where does this go?
Well, it should go towards your mouth.
Yeah, it should be down. Oh, there. Now I can actually see. Okay, gotcha. Okay. Six o'clock. We're probably being ordered. This will be the September seventh. Six, yeah. We're on the die. We'll call.
Ms. Howell?
Here.
Ms. Butler-Chandler here. Mr. Wissfasser?
Yes.
Mr. Americi?
Here.
Mr. Betsy?
Here.
Mr. Pughn-Bliss?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we're on section two, which is your civil reflection. That gives you the pledge of allegiance to the flag. You all stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With a moment's silence. Thank you. I hope most were thinking about those Louisiana, which are heavy all the time, and up these coast. Okay, we have approval of the agenda.
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
I'll start then.
All those in favor, we'll call.
Mr. Americi?
Yes.
Mr. Betsy?
Yes.
Mr. Wissfasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howell?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler? Yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Pughn-Bliss?
Yes.
Okay. Is that to the end? Is there a disclosure conflict tonight? I have not seen none. Or I can see none. Maybe that would be a better word. All right, so next one's public statements. And we're limited to three minutes. For your door holes. And it's designated for statements that are concerning items that are on the agenda.
Hi, I'm Paula Clark. And I live in Highland Ridge, here in East Lansing Bath Township. I'm here tonight to talk about the agenda item about COVID safety at the senior center. I am very, very concerned that from the feedback I get, there is very little being done to enforce any kind of protocol there. It's haphazard at best. I'm one of the people, like many of you in this room and others in this room, that fought very hard and worked very hard to make this senior center happen. And I want to continue it to happen. I want it to be there forever. But if we have one death or one serious outbreak there, I think we will lose our senior center. I'm very concerned that this board has not taken the issue of COVID safety as serious as they need to for a group of collective seniors in one place, many of whom are extremely vulnerable. And I'm asking you to please review that and consider it and be as strict as you can. You're going to get a little bit of backlash, but not nearly as much as if you have somebody over there gets sick and die. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. It's very exciting.
Good evening. Marie, where's the table?
Good evening. My name is Judy Gardi. And I'm here to talk about the budget and the budget adoption process. The budget that's presented to you tonight is not really a reflection of the work and the effort that's been put forth by the community. Where are the CIP recommendations? 2020, the... One of the recommendations was that we repaved the playground at Wishwasha Park. That is our most used community asset. I didn't see it in the 2020 budget. I don't see it in the... I mean, the 2021 budget. I don't see it in the 2022 budget. Working together, Friends of Park Lake, the Park Lake Advisory Board, Parks and Rec, and the Planning Commission has been working toward the development of a nature trail around Park Lake. I don't see that in the budget either. All the time and effort, the hoops that you've asked us to jump through that we've jumped through, all the research that's been done, all the work that's been... It's really important that you listen to the community voice, that you honor the work that people bring to you. The Park Lake Advisory Board member, Mary Schaefer, has invited Karen and Joe to row down a pontoon on the fourteenth of September at three o'clock to review the most recent August 2021 weed assessment survey that was done by Dan Hayes and one J.B. McComb, a resident around the lake, and to look at the situation the lake is in right now related to the weeds. The invitation has not been accepted by the township. Karen has been invited, and Joe was invited because he is on the Park Lake Advisory Board. Weed treatment has to be a priority for the Park... for the Park... for Park Lake. It also is not included in the budget. And Karen told me just before the meeting that that was an oversight, and I appreciate that. But moving forward, my question for you all is what is the process? How will the decisions be made? Who will make the decisions? Will the decisions be made in public? And what opportunity will we have not to stand up here like a talking head, but to actually sit down and have a discussion? Thank you.
Hi, Dylan. I'm Rob Moat. I live in Mead Creek currently. The agenda item we're speaking on, speaking on tonight, is the one that deals with the Cherry Street abandonment from Clinton County. This was something that we started, and it's been two years at least, that we started this process blindly going through, not understanding what needed to be done. We finally got some information from Marie, who helped us push it through. I went and got a petition signed. We got the seven freeholders for adjacent properties. We got everything all straightened out. Clinton County put it on their agenda. CCRC went ahead and abandoned the property, so it's now been turned over. And this is where we're at right now in the process. And the adjacent properties and the freeholders that signed it, we're kind of at a standstill now because we're not really sure what needs to be done next step. Our end process of this was to get the land subdivided off to the adjacent property. We're kind of at a standstill with the township now because apparently it's on a plot or a plat that needs to go through possibly Circuit Court. The information that I had said that all parties are in agreement. It doesn't need to go to Circuit Court, that we can simply just go ahead and change the plat. I don't know if it's that simple. I talked with Ryan at length because I don't like to type. But we typed forever on the subject, trying to figure it out. You guys are waiting, I guess, from an attorney to give you some direction on what you can and can't do legally or what would be in the best interest of the township, I guess, is what Ryan likes to say. So we're kind of at a standstill right now. But it has been an ongoing process that we've been working on for a while. It's not one that just popped up on a whim. I started going through this thought process back when, you know, you passed the railroad where it used to be. And now, you know, the people are able to improve the property because it's owned now. And that's kind of what we're looking to do here. And we're just trying to take the property over. It's been abandoned. It's on a plot since 1857, I believe. Never been deeded to anybody. And the landlords now have come together and said, hey, we would like to go ahead and get this property and so we can deal with it, you know, make improvements on the property. That's really about all I got. It's kind of a little bit of background on that. Thanks.
All right, is there anybody else?
It's about time for the power to go on. Hi, I'm Ray Cockkey, Park Lake resident, Bath Township resident. And my topic here is the 2022 budget. And I noticed, it was a little while ago in the Friday report, Taylor put in there about taking bids to take down the old Gupta property that's adjacent to Wissfasser Park. And I just wondered where... How did the township... I assume the township has that property now. And did we buy it or was it will to us or gifted to us? Or I didn't see anything on the budget about that. It has to have been $100,000 property. So where did that money come from? And who made the authorization to do that? Because I didn't ever hear anything about a public meeting or anything. And also, I noticed $100,000 for paving at Wissfasser Park on there. We certainly don't need any more asphalt runoff running into the lake. And then I recalled that Becky had a CIP that was for putting the cushy surface to renew that. So I didn't know if that's what that was for or if it's for real asphalt. That present property is covered with permeable crushed limestone that's compacted. And as such, runoff can go right straight through it into the groundwater. Whereas asphalt cannot. Then it literally runs off. And if you notice, asphalt gets... turns lighter and lighter gray as it ages. And that's because the oil that's in it runs off into the groundwater. And where is it going to run? It's going to run right across the street into the lake. So crushed limestone that's compacted properly is ADA compliant. And I noticed that it's a lot less expensive to repair and to maintain as well. And again, it's permeable for groundwater. Last thing I want to talk about is... or bring up is... I didn't see any money in there. And I think Judy mentioned this already, that Karen mentioned that it was an oversight. But I didn't see one penny in there for Park Lake weed control, which is usually anywhere from $9,000 to $25,000 a year. Or, well, I said weed control. Or trail development, which, you know, we've, as she said, we've jumped through a lot of hoops and taken a lot of time and effort, over 10 years, to pretty much try to answer any questions or obligations you guys have for us in Parks and Rec and the Park Lake Advisory Board. And also, but to this date, you know, there was a public meeting as well. And there was wide public approval and request for a trail. But I don't understand. I just... I don't understand why there seems to be such reluctance to go through this project. And the last thing is, I didn't see anything in there. And it may be under the general budget or something. I don't understand the budget that well. But the goose food problem. Park Lake is what... When everybody says Park Lake, they say, oh, that's Bath. Park Lake is Bath. Bath is Park Lake. And, you know, some people don't agree with that. I don't think any of you live on the lake. But there's, you know, 120 of us that do. And when we see our lake on the news every single week saying that it's infested with E. coli, and as of yet, we don't know where that came from. And one of the reasons back in '76 we put the sewer around the lake was to prevent that. And I still strongly believe that it's the geese. And the lady is still feeding the geese. And I saw another couple out there feeding them yesterday, right on the beach. So something's got to be done, and it's got to be done aggressively and soon and often and regularly to remediate this problem. So I drove down 100 miles from near Cadillac to attend this meeting and hope it didn't offend anybody. But thank you very much for listening to me. And think about Park Lake. Because just like I said, Park Lake is Bath. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Is there anybody else? All right. Do we have anybody from the county, state, federal, or other agencies? You guys count them off.
Liz is joining us from the Mid-Michigan Health Department. And she'll be speaking to the item of vaccinations at the senior center. She's got a lot of meetings to attend, so she's ready for a talk now. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. My name is Liz Braddock, and I'm the health officer for Mid-Michigan District Health Department, which covers Clinton County. I was asked to come here today to talk about vaccine COVID-19 policies and what our recommendations, our guidelines would be for the senior center. So as you know, we are pushing vaccine in Clinton County. We have vaccine available. Our rates are just below 60%. We have high vaccination rates among the seniors. However, we have no verification if you're 100% with attendance at the senior center. So we're always encouraging vaccine. The question came up, can you mandate vaccine? My answer is that we are... We, as public health, cannot mandate vaccine anywhere. We do not mandate vaccine in our office. We do not encourage... We have not mentioned here that Bath Township should encourage vaccine. It is a choice that people make. However, vaccine is something that we are encouraging as a mitigation strategy to prevent the spread of COVID. We are concerned that those who are immunocompromised are more likely to be susceptible to COVID vaccine. You may get COVID breakthrough if you are considered immunocompromised. We do offer the third dose to those that are considered immunocompromised, may have some underlying conditions. However, we're also concerned that the Delta variant and other variants are more likely to infect those who are unvaccinated and those who are unmasked. So if we have vaccine, if we have masks in a location, we're doing the best we can to prevent those strategies. We also know spread of COVID is more likely in indoor locations and also in locations where there is crowds. So when we are considering a COVID-19 safety policy for those in a senior center, we need to look at a lot of mitigation strategies. So maybe look at things like requesting that people get vaccinated, requiring, since it's in your building, masks be used other than when you're eating and drinking or if somebody is unable to due to medical condition. We would consider social distancing. And then we'd also consider what the ventilation of the room is, where the activities are. We're also very aware that we are trying to include as many people as we can. And the issue of inclusion does come up with those who may or may not want vaccine. Or the same with may or may not want to wear a mask. So I would encourage you to consider having a policy in place here for those to wear masks since you are possibly unable to ask those who are coming into the building what their vaccine status is. So if you have any questions, I would be willing to answer any or... No?
I do have a question. So you had indicated that... I just wanted to clarify. Is it the official position of Mid-Michigan Health Department that vaccination is a personal choice?
Yes. Yes. It's a personal choice. It is... Talk to your medical provider. We are encouraging it, but we have... There is no mandate for my staff to get vaccinated. And there is no mandate anywhere in the state right now for vaccine. We are just highly encouraging it, yes.
At this time, I'm going to ask the board if there's any questions the audience might have to her. If this might be a good time to help her to move his whole thoughts. Question that she can ask. Anyone's thoughts with it? Doesn't appear that there is any support for that. So if you've got a question, you'll have to wait and ask her. Leslie's on her own. All right, thank you. Thank you, Liz.
Why don't you go back up to the podium? Because you didn't use three minutes and ask your question. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Again, Judy Gardi. This time as chairperson of the Senior Services Advisory Board. Paula, I hear you. And I understand you. And I often serve as the mask police.
Judy, this is open for public comment too?
This is not public comment?
No.
Sorry.
This is... I understand. I thought when you came up, that was a confusion. Items for county, state, or other agencies.
Good evening aboard. This is on Dwight Washington, 4600 Clark Road. It's really great to be here and to see that people are together. People are working and talking with one another, even though that people do have a mask on. And when I walk in here and I do see everybody wearing a mask, I think that that's a sign of a community that's taking COVID seriously. And I just want to give kudos for that. One of the things I hope to talk about today was about... From the Mid-Michigan local public health department. But Liz was here and she addressed that, so I think that's satisfactory. But I would like to say that many of you, or a number of you may know Marcus Chino, who has retired now and Liz has taken his spot. She was highly recommended by Marcus. And she has a background in environmental health and had worked with the department for a couple of years. And it was really well received by the department. So we're very excited to have her in this position, as rocky and as rough as it may be right now. So again, I want to wish you the best and continue the good work that you're doing. Along with that, one of the things I want to bring up is that the albatro, Michelle Rick, our judge from Clinton County, is having her investiture. So she is getting in place as on her Michigan Court of Appeals that, you know, where she is voted by the citizens of Clinton County and other places. But that's moving ahead. And I just think that's awesome when somebody from our community does do well and exceeds and takes a leadership role in our state. I also wanted to let know, and I know, Marie, that this is important to you because you've been in attendance at many of our Clinton County board meetings in the past. But the budget is being discussed in the Ways and Means meeting tomorrow. And there's four general assumptions that we're proceeding for. And I thought it'd be beneficial if you knew how the philosophy and the direction that the county was going. And really, this primary one is due to unknown course of the pandemic. Much uncertainty remains. So we do plan to take... Continue to take a conservative approach in our finances. And given the nature of local government financing, the state of Michigan revenue growth is limited, so we're not expecting a lot. Meaning pension obligations and capital improvement needs will continue to be challenging. And finding room in the budget for new programming will be difficult. And this is a summary from Craig Longmecker and our new county administrator, who is following up on the work that Ryan had done. And that's my report for this evening. Is there any questions?
How much money are you expecting from the county or at the county from the federal ARPA funds?
We're expecting around $14 million. And we have not had discussions in depth on that yet. But there's a general outlines of pockets and what we think that we'll do. A significant portion of that will go to the general fund because we feel that we lost that revenue during the pandemic. And so with the ARPA fund, we're able to replace that money that was lost.
Will there be any engagement of the local government authorities in how the county might want to spend that?
That could come up this week in terms of discussion. And I'll take that point forward and let them know. It's... Again, we haven't gotten to that point yet. It's really trying to... I think our philosophy has really been to get through the pandemic in the steadyest way possible. And then to reengage with the economy as in a way that, you know, we best saw fit. And that was really to give the community kind of a heads up. And we're hoping that people are to get their mitigation strategies together. And again, I look in here and I see like there's six... Well, there's two, three feet between chairs. You know, the masks, the chair space, and the clean air. And hopefully, the communities and organizations got that together. And that's been our focus. But I, again, I think that... I appreciate your question and would like to bring that forward to...
Thank you. I imagine we all would love to see more investment from the county in Bath Township.
Okay, well, thank you.
We'll vote to receive the consent agenda. Just so everyone knows, the spares.
I'm going to...
Seven.
We approve the consent agenda?
Hold second.
You have a question? I have another question. Your second, which is... I have to ask, I guess, our clerk. Do we have... You guys have a copy of that?
Of what?
Of your election commission meeting that was okay for October eighth? Because I didn't have one, so that would be my only...
We haven't had another meeting, so it isn't sent on.
All right. Well, that was it. So are we going to move to approve, discuss, send agenda? That was my only question. I didn't have...
Yeah, you've had a motion and a second on the floor.
Yep.
Mr. Betsy?
Yes.
Mr. Wissfasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howell?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Pughn-Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Americi?
Yes.
Thank you.
We are now on eight, which is the total of the minutes. Or the board of trustees need it. The first one is October 2nd.
Can we approve this separately?
I was hoping, because I was going to ask that. Wait, mine's people like. All right. We're looking at the August 2nd minutes for the board of trustees to be approved.
Marie?
I again have...
Ryan's got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me see it.
That's okay. The changes that were requested to be made, were those made?
Yes.
Okay.
And you read them, Marie?
The minutes, yes. What changes?
In the right?
No. The only thing that I have a problem with that needs to be removed, as far as I'm concerned, is Park was the supervisor, Howell briefly lost control of the meeting, but she didn't say how. She lost control. So that's kind of left out to... If you want to bring in, my point would be to eliminate it. But if you don't want to delete it, then I'd like to know how.
These were the minutes that you had requested for that change to be made. Did you find that sufficient?
I didn't request any changes.
Yes, you requested the change.
That's why it's on this agenda.
It was something you had said, and you wanted it clarified.
And clarified being...
It's your public comment at the end. Your board comment at the end. You wanted me to add, she does not excuse herself, but feels communication is a due respect.
That's what you're talking about? Okay.
That's that you asked to be changed.
Yep.
Right headed.
That was... No, okay, but it doesn't... It's not in here, is it?
Yes.
Not in my... Okay, thank you.
We haven't got a motion, have we? We haven't got a motion yet.
I'll make the motion.
No, not on this one.
Here is the court.
We're waiting to see if Marie was happy before I was put in there.
Okay. Okay. Yes, that's true. All right, now, I'm going to ask for a second one, and if that's, and that would be my second request, whether or not that language removed or explained how it is. Is that what you're...
Yes, it's...
Everybody's confused on it. Okay. All right, got two heads up.
I'm in the motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' regular meeting of August 2nd.
All right, you want to vote on it?
Yes. Ms. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howell?
No.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fiums Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Amorigi?
Yes.
Mr. Benzy?
Yes.
Twenty-two K, I'll be on the 16th minute, the Board of Trustees.
I'd like to approve the minutes of August 16th, 2021, Board of, regular Board of Trustees' meeting with amendments. I did make a mistake on page seven of the minutes, under additional second quarter budget I put motion by trustee Amorigi instead of Mr. Benzy.
I'll second the motion.
Change.
Thank you. Ms. Howell? Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fiums Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Amorigi?
Yes.
Mr. Benzy?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we go to item nine, which is approval of vouchers.
Move approval of the vouchers as presented.
Second.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fiums Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Amorigi?
Yes.
Mr. Benzy?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howell?
Yes.
Treasure support?
Yes, ma'am.
Item 10, says you were taking.
I don't have any tech, I just want to talk. I hope you can hear me with my mask on. Obviously, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the audience and the board members. We're into the fourth or second launch of our summer tax collection. I'm going to do some stuff during that on the summer tax collection, 2021 summer tax collection has been underway since July 1st. The total summer tax roll is $10,325,701, and some change. That is with our July border review correction. As of the September 7th, we always like to look at it this time of year, right after Labor Day, to see where we're at. We're right on course, we're at $6,959,0498, which is 68% of our butt, our tax draw. And we do this every year, we talk about this. We're within 50 to 60%, so I assume it's a little bit higher. That's not bad. We have a little bit left to do here, between now and the 15th. We have, before the interest comes in, we have about $3,364,96. These numbers are as of tonight. Close of business tonight, donor. The, tell you a little bit, the public a little bit, or some of you people know on the board, but where this money goes in the summer tax collection? It goes to your fund, your school aid, your SET, state education tax is the big thing for all four school districts. We have four school districts in Bath Township. We have Bath Schools, Langford Schools, Haslett Schools, and East Lansing. All four schools collect summer tax, the SET tax upfront, 100% of it. All the county tax, for the county people, I don't see the county people all up, but they get their money all upfront as well in the summer tax that they allocate, it goes to the county, and they split that out. For school districts, we have East Lansing Schools, it gets 100% of their tax in the summer tax collection, as well as the ISD taxes in their area and the LCC. Haslett Schools gets 50% of their taxes collected. They lack a little money in the summer, and they get the rest of it in the fall. They also collect their ISD for Inum and their LCC. By the 15th of September, all taxes are due, about 1% interest, with on 1% interest. So that has to be done by the 15th for the residents, now to save their interest on their taxes or paying interest. Deferrment of free, for interest-free deferment now, there's a lot of folks that qualify for that, it's a big thing. I'm going to tell you this, I hope I don't forget somebody that's 65 and older, paralegal agent, any medical condition, agricultural exemption, and there is one other one, it's a poverty exemption type thing, that you can defer your summer taxes to the winter until February 14th, and not have to pay any interest on them. That pretty well sums up the taxes. I'll say this, because somebody probably here is going to say, well, what's Bath Township get for the summer taxes? We have the, for the administration fee for the summer tax draw, and that includes the payment for the assessor, for the, for two people in the assessing department, as well as the taxes and the software for BSNA for the assessing and the taxes and the treasurer's department, and collecting upfront and the wages and everything, we get $102,214.52, which is not a lot of money when you look at what the budgets are for some of these departments. But that is what we get out of the summer tax collection. Now, on the late tax collection, you'll get money too, but we're not, we're not to that point yet. With that being said, I'm going to talk a little bit more about this, which we're going to deal with later in the evening. We're going to deal with our 2021 tax rate request for our, what's known as our AL 4029. You'll see that it's on the agenda. Up the, this, this year for 2021, because that's what this is, with all taxes reflected in the rear for 2021, the taxable value of Bath Charter Township is up roughly $19 million from 2020. That's $18,989,678 is the difference between the taxable value between last year and this year. So we have increased the taxable value, we're building more houses, we have more going on, that's the reason why some of the bills increase around here as far as fees and things for collecting and running government and doing everything you have to do. That's about all I got for you for late tonight. I can give you some more information, I could move on for a couple hours if you want to do, we probably don't want to hear that. But that's where I'm at, anybody's got any questions aboard, I'd be happy to answer. Yes?
With the dissolution of the DDA, will this be the first tax collection that the money goes back to LCC?
And, and the event that the DDA does not meet their, I believe that there's a seven day, if I'm not mistaken, there's a seven business day window opportunity for appeal, was that not happening? Yes. But once the, the DDA, when the winter tax roll will be signed in the tax bonds and the, and the tax database, it will be signed by myself and the treasurer of the county, what will happen here is that the DDAs will no longer be cap taxed, will be captured. The correct word for that is, because what they did is they captured taxes from Bath Charter Township Police and Fire, as well as Bath Township Operating and LCC. With that being signed this year, with that dissolution being, being legitimate, as what it was, as it was, it was found that way in court last week, second, that will happen. There's a little bit of scrutiny on that, but I believe that after Treasurer Ward and I, from the county, will get together on the 30th there and sign the paper, I think it's pretty well done. And it's, but it is, it's not the DDA, it's not, DDA district, as you know, if you read the language, it's included, it's still included, and you retain the, reserve the money that's there that Bath Township will have, and to retain it, restrict it, excuse me, in the odd, and we put it on to, I heard the lady talk tonight about the CIP project, that is something we will talk about in the budget workshop, and that will be part of the budget workshop. However, the, what you did do away with, by doing away with, with the dissolution, is you did away with the Tax Income Finance Agreement, which is the TIF agreement. They no longer have the lever or the arm, or they don't have any capability of capturing taxes for the Tax Income Finance Act. That's what's went away. And that will, that will take and, yes, redirect all the tax funds back to the taxing units, and the only two taxing units, there is this Bath Township and LCC, so you are correct.
Thank you.
Is that a long answer?
Perfect.
Another scuffle.
Yes.
Probably understand it better. Thank you. Any other questions?
Item 11, which is committee appointments, there are none. Item 12, which is the township committee reports. Now, that I guess is mine. Only for information, so that you all know, that, I think you already know, Joe, regards to us being a member of the sewer committee. For the first time, we had an organizational meeting where our members actually met, and the members picked who they wanted for their chairs and their vice chair and their secretary. As it stated in my report to the, to the board, I was the one who wanted an alternate secretary. They decided, you know, they didn't want an alternate secretary. So that was fine, that was fine with me. So there are three committee chairs, which always have, there are four on this committee. So it's, somebody at once said to me, well, that's like the fourth person being, you know, kind of out there, but it isn't. It's still a committee. And the four meet, and trustee Benzy sits on Sewer Appeals. Your Construction Board of Appeals is Gil, okay, I believe I'm... Bert Gale. She has these two names for first, so it's Bert Gale, and Bert is our zoning administrator. He does an excellent job, and he really did a nice job with the first organizational meeting that we had with this group. And they again, picked who they wanted for their chairs, their vice chairs, and their secretaries. So that's all in the packet, for those who received packet or who pulled up the packet. So it's only an information piece, so that everybody here on the board understands, and you understand, that this agreement or this organizational meeting took place with these two committees. So if there's any questions, I guess I can't take them because it's not how it works, but that's what it is. Okay, so that was my report on organizational meetings, the Summer Board of Appeals and the Construction Board of Appeals. So now we go to item 13, which is unfinished business. This is for introduction and discussion, this is COVID-19 requirement to patrons. And I think our superintendent, yes, Anne?
I do, thank you. So at your last board meeting, of course, you discussed having a vaccination requirement for the patrons of the senior center, and I agreed I would try to bring someone here for you, and that was Liz tonight, Reddick, from the Mid Michigan District Health Department. In addition to that, trustee Fiums Bliss had asked if we could acquire information on some local senior centers and what, what they're doing currently for mitigation strategies, and if, and if they were open. So I provided that information for you tonight. If I can answer any questions or if you have assistance to do in your discussion, I would be pleased to do that.
Are there any questions? Okay. My question is, the assessment that you had done, this was done on the computer as opposed to on the phone, so you talked to somebody?
We looked at their webpages and...
Yeah, or some shades of solid data information.
Correct, a lot of them had, had a date as to when it had been updated.
Okay. Because I personally would prefer the phone call to each one to do, but that's why I want to make sure that you knew this was an updated piece, and this is the updated information that you can get from, because sometimes the computer's a little behind, because you have other things to do, and those who manage it are always on top to get information.
There were dates that were on the computer that said when the information had been updated, so it seemed current.
Okay, cool. That was my only... Sorry, Jason, I just wanted to see, go ahead.
So thank you for bringing your representative in the Michigan Health Department. I do have to say, I feel like I'm less knowledgeable about how to address things based on what she shared. Frankly disappointed, but it is what it is. I do want to say that I did visit the senior center. There was an issue that I saw with masks not being enforced, so I think we can make some improvements there. I did reach out to Brittany, the senior center coordinator, and offered information about how she could reach out to the DOJ reps to certify a pop-up to vax clinic at the senior center, and she was very receptive to that, which has a date scheduled that coincides with time for that, for the booster shot. So I would like to, if we are not going to look into a vaccination policy, at least create some incentives for people to get shots and take our perks serious. And do the best that we can to make sure we vaccinate as many people as possible.
Is there any other?
So is our intention to bring this back as an item for action, or is this just the update we're receiving tonight?
Do you understand what he's, he's asking, if this was an update, or are we going to bring it back?
I'm asking anyone who will answer.
I have a suggestion. I mean, I would like to see a clear plan, and so, on how we're going to do this. And it doesn't have to be super lengthy, but at least something in writing. Actually, I'd prefer to see a vaccination department policy, but I don't feel that my, that the board is in a place to go along with that. In the absence of that, again, something concrete in terms of how we're going to make things for citizens.
I'm a little confused, like, you want a plan, but you don't want to act on it?
Well...
You want a clear plan?
I want a clear plan, and if we have a plan, we're more likely to act on it, probably.
Catch up.
The Health Department was just here, do they have a policy, an overall policy that they're recommending?
Besides what she said.
Personal, personal choice, but of course, they, they push for vaccination.
There's a reason I asked it, okay? So you can't count on them then to give you an overarching policy?
No.
Okay. Well, being realistic about that, that puts us in a tough spot. It really does. So I'll be interested to see what you come up with.
Trustee Bliss, go ahead.
Do you have thoughts about what you would come up with, or are you looking for more guidance from us?
No, I have thoughts.
Okay.
I do think that if we have a policy where if they're going to come, they sign an agreement that basically states they know they are coming, they are required to wear a mask, it may be that we lessen the amount of people that can enter the senior center, because we are not at this time, there were no limits on attendance, so we may back that number down a little bit. We've had about 55, I think, per day, so we may do that, so that there's more distance between the tables and the people at the tables. And signing an agreement that says if I'm here, I know I'm required to wear a mask unless I'm eating and drinking, and therefore something that we can enforce if Brittany has to speak to someone more than once or twice, you know, whatever that number is, that the person can be asked to leave for the day, possibly, if they're not going to adhere to the requirement to wear a mask, but also agreeing that if...
Okay, trustee Ryan brought up a point that the vaccine, some of them, well, I can just warn right now, has been no longer on probation, if you will, it has been approved for use. The rest of them are going to follow soon. That's a game changer. We're not asking somebody to do something that isn't an experiment anymore. As what was first presented to us, we would be asking somebody to take something that was actually an experiment at that time because it hadn't been approved. But as these vaccines get full approval, it's a game changer. So I would revisit this at a later point in time because things are changing and we should revisit this at a later point.
As long as it's understood, Pfizer stays with Pfizer, the German stays with the German, and JJ stays with JJ. You don't mix them. At least that's what the health people are telling us, you don't mix them.
I'm going to take that position. I'm just going to let this run its course. They're no longer experimental. Pfizer is no longer.
Pfizer is no longer, that's correct.
The rest of them will be following suit, okay?
But they haven't yet.
But in the future, when we have this discussion, it's a game changer in our original discussions when things were experimental. This won't be part of it. It won't be an experimental medicine anymore. It will be approved medicine.
When they approve it, that's correct.
That's correct.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, the main objection in place was the lack of FDA approval.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, you want me to hear? All right. Judy has been jumping back there to say something with this issue. Would you like to have her wait until the next public comment or can there be an interaction?
I don't think we can pick and choose when we engage the audience.
It's a two-thirds vote, but that's okay. Do you want to wait for the second? No, I appreciate that. Thank you, Judy. Okay. Is there any other issues?
Yeah, I got one.
Yes?
I talked with the fire department and the last, that was less than a month ago, and half of our fire department, they didn't think would get the shots. Now, we're asking us to lose half of our fire department by making them get shots. I think we should check with Dave, make sure, have him check them again, but you're, right now, you're chewing off your foot despite yourself. I know, I recommend they get them, but I can't recommend that, I can't make you get them.
I also support personal choice, but we should discuss this later, okay, and see what the options are in never-changing environments at work.
Well, I think with Liz here, she was getting, she was telling us the options. Would it be okay to have her come back and change?
No.
No?
She's going to have the same statement to share this time.
I'm going to argue what she said.
So you don't think in two weeks they'll change?
No.
Okay. All right, then. Okay, as you said, not to lose them, you don't have to that long. You're looking at the Health Department as not a resource for superintendent to make a recommendation.
She basically said she wasn't a resource for that.
No, that's what I mean.
I think I understand what the board would look now. The board members that have spoken up, I fully understand what they are thinking.
Good, because then you'll, then the two weeks will have a recommendation. Is that correct? Okay. All right, please. Okay, so now we go on to capital B, under 13, which is items for action. And I think Superintendent Hill, you're up with lift stations.
Thank you. As you'll recall at the last meeting, Brad, firstly, firstly, the Director of Operations of our Southern Clinton County Municipal Utility Authority visited with us and informed us about station 201, which is the final station responsible for transmitting all of our flows of waste. And he hit on why it's crucial that it be at its full capacity and operated at its full capacity. Currently, it's operating at about 1,100 to 1,200 gallons per million on the best days, and that's probably being positive about it. And the pumps therefore have to work harder than they should. He recommended to us that the most cost-effective solution would be to upgrade to a single pump. He even recommended that we use, I hope I don't say this correct, incorrectly, but the DuBois Cooper Homo pump at a cost of approximately $35,000. In addition, he asked us to upgrade the electrical components to service the larger pump that is required, which was approximately $12,000. The total cost of the project would then be approximately $78,000 with contingencies. I'm asking for you to act on this tonight. I have put the other project that you've heard about on hold for the time being as I'm working with Prime New Hawk to develop a master plan for our sewer infrastructure. And we are also working on a rate study for our sewer infrastructure and the use of that and the money that brings in. And I think we can address the other needs of the sewer system at a later date when those two reports are complete.
In this action, is this fundamentally making a budget amendment as well, or will we have to amend the budget later but approve the expenditure now?
I believe that we have the funds in our budget at this time.
Oh, it's already budgeted in there?
Yeah. It's, the funds are in the, I assume, the budget? The, our, I believe it's capital improvement.
So what does, why do we need to approve the expenditure if it's already in the budget?
It wasn't budgeted specifically for this.
Got it. Thank you.
So my question is, it's coming out of the sewer budget.
Yes, of course.
What the contingency, Brad, is that engineering contingency or what is it?
So the contingency I put in there is ultimately due to the economics of today. You know, it took a little process to get through and as we get numbers, we're seeing what holds on these numbers around 15 days unfortunately for these vendors. I've talked with these vendors, we've talked with them recently. The hardest thing we're having trouble with right now is a local vendor to help us get the installation complete. We've used Gunthorpe on your guys' projects in the past, which is a local vendor that's inside the township. They still seem willing, they've just been busy and backed up, but that's the contingency was for, was ultimately to cover.
It's a supply chain.
It's a supply chain, absolutely.
Is there any contingency with Prime New Hawk with engineering?
Contingency with Prime New Hawk?
Yeah, with engineering costs, does that make a difference?
So on this piece here, Prime New Hawk is not necessarily involved. They had, they looked at it to say yes, in theory that works and that will create a short-term fix. This is not the overall long-term fix for that, but this will get us through the future, the foreseeable future. The long-term fix that Prime New Hawk will be involved in more correctly, but no, they have nothing to really to do with this other thing.
Their master plan that I referenced.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm reading.
All three of us.
You're watching, I'm reading.
Would you describe this as a critical piece that we need to do right now?
This is critical. The issue being that that station is nearing the 12, 13-year mark. It's been overworked from day one, so we'll have to look at replacing those pumps in the future, very near future. This will give us a one-up where we can take one pump out, get it rebuilt, have it as a backup, which then buys us time for the rest of it and kind of extends our life expectancy a little more, but yet gets us the flow we need in the short term.
That's helpful. Thank you.
You have a question? You have a handout here?
I just go ahead. My horsepower is the Boy Cooper.
The Boy Cooper, they were looking at, they were still finalizing the numbers on that, but it's going to be 87 to 90. And typically, the issue with that again is supply chain. It fits the chart very well, but again, they're having some supply issues, so if they can, they can trim things different ways on the impeller, they can change the horsepower, but that's, they're comfortable in their number enough to get it at a three-month extension or guarantee.
So they will guarantee that?
That one, that piece they will. The other pieces that we're involved in, that's where the contingency comes in, electrical components, but they were the only ones that were firm on a longer window.
How long is this pump going to last? You say the near future.
That's like asking for the winning lotto.
Yeah, okay, but this other pump lasted, what, 20 years?
Well, yeah, the pumps, these pumps are still, the pumps that we're replacing are still operational. They're operating today.
I mean, how quick are we going to have to go into, we're spending $78,000.
Yep.
We could use that maybe to, and help pay for the other one that they're going to put in later on.
Yep. So with that being said, the particular pumps you have in there now, you paid more than the $38,000 12 years ago for, so this is a good buy. Granted, it's a different manufacturer. It's a manufacturer that's trying to get into the States. They're a European company. We've talked with the operators that have them, they're very comfortable, have good luck, great warranty, a great vendor that backs them up. So we're comfortable making that recommendation knowing that it's a more cost-effective solution than even replacing the existing pump. To say how long it's going to last, they have a five-year warranty, just like most anything else in the pumping world. I've, in my 20 years of experience, I've seen them last anywhere from a year to 35 years. There's no, really no rhyme and reason sometimes to mechanical failures, but I would be comfortable saying you're going to get this 10 to 15-year life expectancy out of this. Depending on use. I mean, if we start getting a lot more 100-year, 500-year events, it's going to use a lot more and it's going to wear out quicker.
Okay, any more questions?
I would move approval to approve the expenditure not to exceed $78,000 for the pump upgrade project at lift station 201 Slate Road.
Does that include contingencies?
Yeah, it's, yes, it did. Yep, it was built, yeah.
Of course I included that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Amorici?
Yes.
Mr. Benzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes?
Yes.
All right, now we need to go through, that one is unanimous, dealing with lift station 201. Now, we'll be second, which would be small B as in boy, second reading and adoption of ordinance 3173.
I would to approve the second reading and adoption of ordinance 3173.
Second.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Amorici?
Yes.
Mr. Benzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes? Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Okay, see, the budget amendments, under items for action, B, budget amendment, office relocations, renovation and furniture.
This is pretty straightforward. I outlined here the offices that would be impacted. The, prior to the office being redone for Brunda, our clerk had been, I think, at least 30 years since that office had been redone. And I'm trying to just make sure our offices are clean and professional. So I am asking for 11,500 in furniture and $3,000 in renovations in order to upgrade four offices.
I have a quick question, but I'm going to make those second, no question.
Brenda gave us, Alan and I, a tour of the offices back there. Things are looking really sharp and nice, so nice job on that. And with that, I would make the motion to approve the recommendations presented by the superintendent for budget amendments, 11,500 and $3,000 in the appropriate line items as outlined.
I have a question. What you're asking for, is that 2021's budget or 2020's budget?
I'm amending 2021's budget.
Okay, for the repairing of the office in 2020. In other words, these offices would have been 2029, would have been in 2020.
No, I'm asking it for work to be completed after you approve. This has not been spent.
Okay.
I'm asking for work to be done after this amendment is approved, if you choose to so approve it.
So he's going to relocate, get new furniture for the treasurer, and superintendent is going to relocate renovations and furniture?
Correct.
Okay. Where's he relocating to?
I'd prefer to refer to it as a desk versus furniture.
He has not requested a lady.
But I'll give you a little background. That furniture's done there since 1996. When I was there in 1996, and it got bought from the deceased treasurer that was there before I. And it never changed during the last, I was gone three years, I'm back for five, so it's been there for a while.
Oh, no, I don't get, but when it says relocation in furniture, so my question, do you relocate?
The treasurer and the clerk are going to be as they should be right next to each other because they interact every day down here. The treasurer will be in the assessing office because you moved the assessing office to the back.
And then the deputy superintendent, I'm assuming, will go into?
I have no idea. The only thing I do is do the treasurer's thing. You better not be locked up. I don't want to get too far out on my scope.
No, that's not really true, but I'll take it for what you say. So what you do is then moving the treasurer to the vaca.
That's correct.
Which, which is a nice, that is really nice, you like that. And then that becomes vaca.
Yes, and I will move in there?
Okay. And then what happens? Do you want to center?
The deputy superintendent will take that office?
That's what I, because I wasn't sure who was moving.
If you think about it, the treasurer and the clerk interact with the front staff more than anybody else.
Oh, no, that makes sense.
And the window over there, so you can see what's going on if there's an issue.
It just, it would have said relocate, I'm looking at the act line, I was relocating.
We had a clerk here for 39 years, God bless her, she was a wonderful asset, and she wanted the assessor next door, and because that's the way it was for 39 years.
Sure.
And that's kind of how this is came about, I guess, you could say.
No.
President and I have agreed enough to reach other, and all things are still, so we can prove about.
No, you're just having a walk.
I personally am looking forward to it after as many years as I've come back and back. I always felt like people tried to hide me from everybody.
That's true.
But I'm looking forward to be a little more.
Trusty Benzi.
Yeah, we're just trying to approve the retrofit of four offices. And where the pieces end up, that depends on where the people working here want the pieces to end up.
I wish I knew this is that, but no, I want to know whether 11,000 is going forward or 3,000. It's making sense.
The renovation of four offices.
It's making sense as to where they're going to be and what they're going to do. So you do your thing, I'll have to do mine. That works. All right. Yep, ready? Mr. Amorici?
Yes.
Mr. Benzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. How?
I'll say yes.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes? Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're going to forget me there for a second.
All right, so that appears to be the end line. Okay. All right, the next point that we can, we're on new business, 14, introduction and discussion. I was hoping, it depends on what the board wants to do, that we could open this up for a committee as a whole.
To talk about the superintendent's contract?
Talking about superintendent's contract and the abandonment. There'll be two issues.
So you want to go to committee of the whole for this?
Prove them?
If you want to take them, we need to take them one at a time, but it's open up to the public to be able to take up a discussion.
I'm just clarifying, you want to go to committee of the whole for the superintendent's contract?
And for abandonment, yes, for A and B. If I can't do that, then I can save it for B.
Can you just explain why you want to go to committee of the whole for the superintendent's contract?
Because I think it's important that you have, you're not going to have a discussion on it. You're not going to have a discussion on it. My assumption, you have an ass issue with me, is that this had not been discussed and it needed to be discussed, and it was more important to bring in the public and with us.
I asked for this to be on the agenda and I don't, I don't think it's a public issue.
Then the public has no say in it. Okay, that's fine. No.
Go ahead and ask a question. Was I saying something?
If Ryan's finished, then.
Legally, legally, the only way you can take and bring a person's contract out of here, this is the police chief's, the platter chief's, the superintendent's contract, or whoever else has one here, to a public meeting, when we talk about that public meeting, is with the consent of the person that you're dealing with, the police chief, the platter chief, and the superintendent. So you really couldn't do that, this board couldn't do that unless the superintendent agrees to do that. That's the legal.
And that's, that's illegal.
That's, that's the only thing I want to say, is I want to make sure you understand.
I understand, I understand.
This board can't vote on that. And that's, is that true for that? That's up to the superintendent to request that. If she wanted to request that to go into closed session, she has every right to do that.
Sure.
And the board has every right to go into closed session to discuss this.
Yes. All right, so because it's on the agenda, that shouldn't be on the agenda, that would, because it's saying that's our superintendent employment agreement.
I consented for it to be on the agenda.
That's what I thought, but that's the way to do it. So is there any discussion? If you, if no one does, that's fine. I would do the committee as a whole for the abandonment of Cherry Street because I think that's important enough for a discussion. So if you want, where are the items for discussion? So do you have any, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm really confused. I asked for this to be on the agenda. Is it okay for me to present it now?
I don't know, it doesn't say you, are you the presenter?
I am.
Okay, then present it.
Okay.
Okay, it doesn't say.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
One quick one. Do you want this discussed, or do you want to go into a private session?
I'm fine with it being discussed.
Okay. Yeah, fine, go ahead.
Thank you. It has become clear over the last couple of months, but certainly over the last week, that the relationship between the supervisor and the superintendent has soured, if exists at all. There is clearly not communication between the two, and when there is, it's, it's harsh. I'm invested in keeping Karen with us as long as she's willing to be here and perform, and I think she is performing. So I would propose, and I have copies of these motions for you all to see, since it's a bit complex, that we would alter the superintendent's contract with her permission, obviously, as a contract she'd have to sign off, and replace where it calls for supervision by the township supervisor and change that to township clerk. So if I have counted correctly, that's one, two, three, four, five different places where we would, six? One, two, three, four, five, no, just five.
Yeah, two down here.
Two, oh, yes, I'm sorry, six total words, yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Five clauses, you're right, where we would be replacing the supervisor with the clerk. That's under vacation time, under training time, termination by the superintendent, approval of hours, and supervision on a day-to-day basis. I know this is under items for discussion and introduction. We can wait two weeks and take action, or if the board is interested, I would be interested in making that motion tonight. The second piece about that is a process for the evaluation. The superintendent's contract also calls for an annual evaluation every October. It's time for us to plan that out. I think in order to protect the superintendent and make sure that all of the board gets to weigh in on that evaluation, it, it makes sense to form a small ad hoc committee to come up with the factors upon which the superintendent would be evaluated, which is the language from her, her contract as well, and then build a tool for us to use, whether that's a survey or whatever it might be, so that we all can each weigh in on the situation to be provided to the superintendent. So those are the two proposals that I am interested in making. Again, I could wait two weeks, but if the board would entertain it, I would like to move on this tonight.
I would not like to move on it tonight. We tried that. We couldn't find any information on it. When it is an item for action, you can, with the introduction, it's not, this is new business, introduction and discussion. So we can discuss your changes, but moving on tonight.
We've done it twice already.
We have.
Not I have, we have.
Taylor, listen. Taylor, listen.
As I previously discussed with you before, Madam Supervisor, there is nothing in Robert's rules that says that you cannot take up an agenda item and that you have to wait two weeks after it is introduced. The only instances that you do have to do that are when you are really not a first reading of an ordinance, is when you take them back for a second time for a second reading and adoption. Our agenda, the way that it's outlined with introduction and discussion, as well as items for action, is simply a guideline for us to operate on there. It is not set in stone. Any agenda item can be taken up for action at any time.
Okay, thank you. We did have that discussion because it was something that I was a little confused about from the simple reason that says, when is the introduction and discussion? That's what you do. You introduce it, you discuss it, then you bring it back. Taylor and I had a discussion and she tried to say, which you said in one of your pieces, that the agenda is not, how did you put that? The agenda was not a playbook, that's not the term used. With the term that meant the agenda is not solid. We adopt it, we follow it, but it can be massaged, for lack of a better term, during the process, which is what you're asking to do. You're saying if you have an introduction and discussion, you want to move it to an item for action that night. There is nothing in Robert's rules that says that. There are silent items. And the reason there's silent on it is because you do accept an agenda like it is. You don't accept an agenda to say, I want to change it midstream. Go ahead.
When you vote to accept your agenda, you're voting on the individual agenda items that you're going to take up. You're not approving that you're going to only discuss the agenda item or that you are going to take action on that item. It's similar to, as if we do have an item that is listed for items for action, you can choose to not act on that item. You do not have to take action.
And I'm going to respectfully disagree with the fact. And no, you and I had that discussion. That's how we came out. Thank goodness we could still talk to each other. But I do disagree with that strongly. And I do disagree with it because it is silent, the issue of being able to change your agenda midstream. And that's really what you're going to do. I greatly appreciate what you're doing. I obviously don't agree with what you're doing, but that's okay. I'm only one vote, you know, for you. Oh, it's okay, I have no problem with it. I do have a problem with changing it from introduction and discussion to an item for action and not moving it under items for action. Does that make sense to you, I hope?
Yes, you've been very clear.
It's first time. But that's, that's how that kind of feels to me. So it's up to the board, obviously, as, you know, I'm going to, this is what you want to do. I do not favor, and I do think you're in error by doing it. When it says, I'm. When it says, I'm for introduction and discussion, that's exactly what it means. It doesn't mean an item for action. And I appreciate being able to have it. But I do think I would vote against it. So is there a motion? Or I just put one out, correct?
No.
Okay.
I can. I was looking for the whim of the board.
I would second that motion.
I know more than you.
Correct. And then you ducked.
I'm, yes.
I'll raise my hand.
Yeah, I know.
I, what's the issue with this? I, I think this makes a lot of sense.
Of course it does.
Ensures a fair review process. I think the clerk is more often in the building. So these are all kind of just minor edits to improve the process. I like the idea that there's a subcommittee that would develop a process.
And a motion.
Of votes and approval. So I don't see any practical reason why we need to wait on a vote for this. I don't know if any new information is going to be involved. So on that basis, I would second the motion.
Well, first, what is your motion?
So my first motion would be to amend the superintendent's contract dated October 7, 2019, and expiring October 7, 2022, in the ways listed in front of you. I'm happy to read it, but I don't want to speak down to anyone if that's not necessary.
Support.
Do you want to do a local on either of the lines together? No, do a local one at a time. Okay.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howell?
No.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fiusbless?
Yes.
Mr. Elmerigi?
Yes.
Ms. Benzie?
Yes.
My second motion would be to create an ad hoc superintendent evaluation board committee comprised of Treasurer Steve Wisswasser, Trustee Joe Benzie, and Trustee Jason Elmerigi to design a process and evaluation factors to evaluate Superintendent Hildebrandt. The committee will seek feedback on the superintendent's performance from each board member through their desert, design process, and the committee will expire on December 31, 2021.
I'll second that.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howell?
No.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Or Mr. Fiusbless?
Yes.
Mr. Elmerigi?
Yes.
I'm doing the.
Murray?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, for this Cherry Street, I move to go to committee as a whole.
Thank you. I think I should take a moment now.
Yes, we do, yes.
Maybe just a whole second. I'm sorry. Sorry. Is there a second to go to committee as a whole? You guys don't get a voice. So that's okay. We'll discuss it.
You can second it.
I'd be more than happy to second it.
Huh?
I'd be more than happy to second it.
Oh, you can second it.
I'm not sure that's chair, but that's okay. I'll second. So now we're at committee of the whole. You understand what that, the vote, go ahead.
Two thirds vote.
You have two thirds vote, so it's second.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
No.
Ms. Howell?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, no. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fiusbless?
No.
Mr. Elmerigi?
No.
Okay, motion fails. So we're not going to be a committee as a whole. So in discussion that is to be done, we need to have public comment. All right.
Thank you. I prepared a memo and I know that quite a few of the residents were able to pick that up and pull that up online. I'll try to be brief in my synopsis of this. Supervisor Howell, back in June of 2021, contacted the Clinton County Road Commission and embarked on the process of abandoning the public right-of-way of Cherry Street between Clinton and Main Streets, which required the consent of the four adjacent property owners and included some additional freeholders, which were interested parties that I learned. So once I was made aware of the inquiry, because I had not done through this process before, I inquired to Mark Trotter, who works at the Clinton County Road Commission, whether or not our board would have any input into this process. And because Cherry Street did not dead-end into a lake or with water access, he indicated at that time that the township were not having the family abandonment. Fast forwarding to the, the signatures of the property owners and the freeholders were obtained. And that was relayed, the completed package was relayed to Mark Trotter at the Clinton County Road Commission. I included a copy that Ms. Howell had supplied to me. And then on August 19th, they accepted the Cherry Street abandonment petition and passed a resolution to abandon portion of right-of-way for Cherry Street, and they have parentheses, road and Bath Township. At that time, our, right about that same time, our assessor had identified a concern that if this were to happen, that action would be needed to take, be taken in circuit court as the land was part of a platte and the, the property description could not be modified by us, nor could we change the property description. Change or divide, I should say, excuse me, because we were looking to divide it. When I emailed the Clinton County Road Commission, I received a response from their legal counsel for clarification. And I am going to just read the brief, I think it's two sentences. Because the street isn't a platte, the abandonment only got rid of the public's right to use the street. It remains on the platte as a private street until such time as a circuit court enters an order amending the platte under the Land Division Act. In that proceeding, the court would determine how to allocate the former street among the owners in the platte. I received an update from our legal counsel today regarding the issue. Chris Patterson, who generally works on issues for us in conjunction with Ross Bauer, who works with our assessor upon property issues, are working with the Clinton County Road Commission's counsel this week to see what options are available to the parties that are involved, which includes the township and the adjacent property owners. So at this time, I do not have anything of substance to offer you except that we are researching and we are discussing this to see what options that the township has as well as the property owners have. Any questions?
Well, we got, I'm sorry. We got two weeks to, for this to come back. So we'll be able to, at that time, have our attorney's opinion and how we can handle it the best.
I'd make a motion to bring this back in a couple of weeks and we'd have our legal opinions from all of the attorneys involved in this situation.
And I think that probably makes sense because I had called Stanley, who was referenced from Clinton County, the CCRC, the Commissioner's booth. And Doug had said that he will be checking with their attorney.
Absolutely.
To see, which we, we all knew that that's what was going to be done because they needed to do it. They did pass a resolution, however. And that resolution claims that the four property owners, and I think all four of them are here, signed the petition and agreed that, yes, they wanted it to be divided. What they didn't say, and what was wrong, if there is a wrong, the error that was in their resolution, which was kind of an interesting piece, stated that it needs to go, they can only, they can't, they can't, they don't have the authority to give it to the property owners. Only Bath Township can do that. So if my understanding, and Karen, I've been there, my understanding is that they end up abandoning the property. They call it a paper land because it's been there for so long they've never done anything with it. And once they abandon that, then it becomes the township that they'll do it. Now, there's supposed to be Thursday to fix the resolution to state that it will be abandoned for their use of a road and the property rights. Then it, it would then come back to Bath Township. Now, part of what they're saying, and you can have that discussion, I'm sure comments too will come up, with the fact that there are two ways to do it. One is circuit court and one is to just abandon, Bath Township abandons and gives it to their properties.
The resolution, if you're referring to that.
To put it on tax roll, which has never been on tax roll. This piece that's there has always been. A Clinton County arbitrot has kind of sat there and not.
Backer 51.
Yes, they've always had it there and they've never done anything with it. Now, we want to put it, we being the four, which I've been interacting with and talking with them, want to see it on the tax roll. And that's the question. He also, Doug also brought up the question of who's going to pay for it? Whether the property owners pay for circuit court or whether Bath Township pays for circuit court? That's something that their attorney has to know. And I'm assuming that's what Chris is looking at.
Yes.
Our township attorney. So it's kind of waiting, and you're right, it's just waiting until we hear from both of them as to what's going on. But as the interest of the property owners, it should be clearly understood that all four of them are in favor of getting it taken care of and dividing it so that they end up putting it on tax roll for themselves. And that's something that can, obviously, I don't know if I'm putting words in your mouth or not. You can't speak, so go ahead.
I'd like to second Joe's motion.
Which was?
That we wait.
Motion to bring this back in a couple of weeks.
In two weeks.
See if in a couple of weeks they have it. I would bring that. If they don't, we could.
Bring it back when they, when they's ready.
Okay. So there's a second, so we need to vote?
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howell?
Just big show of quick finding. I understand that what we're working at is this coming back once the attorneys, both attorneys, will make a decision. Hopefully, attorneys will not position. Then what happens?
Wait till we, wait till we have it.
That's what I, that's what I, I'm going to say no.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fiusbless?
Yes.
Mr. Elmerigi?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
All right. This one is, and also introduction and discussion. Apply, Ms. Southern Clinton, how new is this? It's a full board.
Thank you. Sorry, I wasn't looking at you. Um, as you're aware, there's a vacancy currently on the Summa Board of Commissioners. If you are so inclined tonight, either to, I'm sorry, it's a sentence. I'm sorry. To discuss filling that vacancy that would be appointed to fill the remainder of the term, which expires December 31, 2023.
Oh, please, thank you. Yes, Mr. Fiusbless, go ahead.
I think I've shared with most of the board my interest and willingness to serve, if you should so have me. Also happy to support other folks who may be interested.
That's my question.
I appreciate the asking of you to ask me that question. I will always, no, I don't need to remind you, God, I'm writing. And as, as the treasurer of the township, which I will remain, I will be available, as I've told the superintendent and various other board members who have, for support or, or anything they would need in the way of information about Southern Clinton and this political authority and our involvement and my knowledge of it. It's, I'm, I'm not as young as I used to be. I have other ambitions. And I'm, I'm getting myself in position where I can, can take some choices in the coming years. And I'm a farmer. I have an extreme amount of land. My wife and I are both, we're getting older. This place is a lot of work. And that, and that's what this is about. I'm not, I, my email did not necessarily praise some of our direction. I think that we have a lot of work to do with our sewer. It's got to start with the planning commission. It's got to start with our marketing of our township and getting some things straightened around and so that we can get back into the developers' eye so that we can continue to take and do these things. You're down to 300, I'm huge. What that means is you're down to, you can build 300 houses in this township, put on sewer, and then you're done. And that's a big problem. And that needs to be fixed and all that. I'm a little bit, um, frustrated about that. So, so that's, that's where we're at. I'm going to be here. I'm going to be here for the other stuff. I'm actually going to be up front here. I'm going to be involved in the tax thing very explicitly. I love the tax world, I love the treasurer world. And like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm going to be further involved. Yes.
Did you put your resignation in?
I don't have to.
Oh, okay. Just don't show up.
Yes. I, I, you have, you're a member of the, you're the member of the, the way, the way that, my understanding, the way that Karen, because I was over there for many years. That's my 13 years, that's before, that was here before. But you're, you're a member of the township. You're the township's representative. If you vote for Ryan tonight, you will be the township's representative along with Karen. And of the, currently, that, that's the way that works. If, if, with the plant rebuilding and restructuring and more capacity is gained, is a possibility. There'll be a third one from Bath Township that'll be on hold. When you rebuild the plant. A lot of people don't realize this, but the last time that plant was rebuilt. The last time that place was there, I, I got, I was there. I was there with other academics, was involved in that. Looked to my eyeballs. There's a lot of work to that. And then, um, there's a lot to do and there's a lot of responsibility. This township has a big asset that's over there along with the city and one of Town Township. It's a big, it's a big undertaking. I think it's time for some new, new eyes to look at it. And if they want some old information, they got plenty of it.
What this is, is items for introduction and discussion. Because usually the supervisor appoints. And that's something, I appreciate finally knowing that this, because when I got the email, I thought, well, I'm going to wait and see. Because sometimes you change minds. And so this one, obviously, didn't change minds. It's something that was important enough to you that you stuck with it. So that means there's an opening in that committee. Okay. So, if that's information, that's appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you letting, letting me know.
Thank the board for, thank you, the board for the respect you give me. I totally appreciate that.
So, in two weeks, we have an appointment.
For the report, I haven't do it. For the report, I can't accept your resignation.
Well, that's, that's right, this is accepted. You know, it didn't come from you, it comes from the superintendent, but that's okay.
Nothing better said, this, this is, this thing scares me, the thing that was coming up with it, because I, I, we had our first in-house meeting after being gone for there for how many years?
A year.
We had, we had several meeting that was a part of since February, I think, we knew a point of being done, but, but we had one, one meeting, and I go over there for the one meeting, and it took a lot, walk up that side block, she knows story, I told her. And, and, you know, and I get there, and I find out that, you know, when I left there, we were just finishing up the, the plant expansion project in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, but when I, when I get there in July, I find out that we already were rebuilding the plant now. And, and it's, it's a lot. I think you need to have somebody that's going to be here for a long time, that's going to be involved in this place and whatnot. And, and I'm not maybe as old as some people at this table, and I'm not picking on any of them. What I have for responsibility is my wife and I are thinking about what our future is, I'm thinking about my future, and I have some other things in mind, and that's what this is all about.
All right, so I have an appointment that I need to cap down in two weeks, because it says appointment to this, for this committee. So, I appreciate finding that out and letting me know. So, you will be submitting, I will be submitting. So, you will have a chance to elect and operate at that time, because you're in it. So, our next one would be Deas and David, the twenty twenty-two superintendent, budget recommendation.
Thank you.
Is that, why is that under items for action?
It's no business.
You're just introducing it?
Yes.
Okay.
This is like a three-month process.
I understand that.
Okay. What, what I, what action were you looking for?
I'm looking for you to vote on your budget recommendations, but that's okay.
This is the beginning of the three-month process.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping this will be the beginning. Yes.
Well, it can't be any quicker.
Then why are you looking for action to approve the budget?
Because what I'm looking at, why are you giving recommendations when we won't have a budget meeting?
I don't.
Well, what you got to do is you got to start picking days that we have our meetings.
So, we're going to be picking dates, not recommendations, is that?
I think we should turn it over to Karen to introduce the item.
That's, well, it doesn't, says prior introduction. Recommendations should be released on Friday, September third.
I think we know it's Karen who's introducing it.
Right. Doesn't say, go ahead, go ahead.
Would you like to do this some other way?
No, it doesn't say that you're introducing it, that's why I looked at it and thought it was a little.
Who do you want to introduce it?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, I will refer to you as to how you would like to go through this. In the past, other boards have gone page by page. Other boards have set up, um, work sessions, um, that we post prior to, um, let's say the next board meeting. Other boards still have done special meetings in between meetings. So, um, I'm happy to do anything that this board comes to the conclusion that they would like to do, um, but I can introduce this by saying that, um, there is a lot here to digest. One of the main issues that I am seeing, and it will be a big discussion for this group, um, will be the police and fire, um, millage. Um, the, the expenses that are being proposed here in the staffing lines are now at an amount that are, that are almost at the, the amount of the millage that we are bringing in. Um, the police chief has requested, um, one officer to replace an officer that will be retiring midway through the year next year. In addition to that, he's asking for one additional officer. The fire department is looking at requesting two, a full-time, um, employees that would respond. It's my understanding that recently, um, the, the fire chief responded to a fire, a structured fire, and there were five, um, people that responded with him. So, our numbers as far as a volunteer paid-out call department have risen over the years. Um, I don't think that, when I have these discussions with the, the fire chief, um, that people have the same sense of volunteerism from their community that they used to have. Um, I can't speak to that, but I know that his numbers are down, and he does not have the people that he used to have that respond to both EMS calls and to fires. So those, that was one of the biggest items, um, that you'll see here. In addition to that, we are on schedule to replace a police cruiser. The last two thousand fifteen police cruiser that we have currently, um, is to be replaced, and that is included here in this budget. Overall recommendations include a three percent increase for all staff numbers. Because health benefit information does not come in until approximately October, I have used a ten percent recommendation from our provider to calculate budget, um, to calculate budget numbers for benefits. So, so that is high. Last year, I did the same thing, and I was given a five percent cut. So, it's very possible, I don't know in this, this world right now what those benefit numbers will look like, but it's possible it could be anywhere from ten percent, it could be more, it could be a lot, it could be a cut like we experienced last year. Um, as you're aware, the superintendent's department obviously, um, is larger than it had been in the past, and this reflects the decisions made by the board for our front office position that is being staffed currently, and the deputy superintendent position, but it also eliminates the administrative services department, and thereby the spending in that department has been transferred to the superintendent's department. The twenty twenty-two election cycle, um, will be much like the twenty seventeen election cycle that we went through. Um, the police and fire millage will be voted on next year, as well as a couple of township positions. So, we've tried to estimate that, um, those amounts at that level back from twenty seventeen. Um, in addition to, the clerk has been looking at an absentee voter, um, ballot board, I don't want to say that, county board. Um, because we have approximately thirty-six hundred absentee ballots that are now received, um, that's actually almost as much as a precinct in this township. So, we're looking at having a board that counts those and that will do that all day along basically with the same equipment. In the assessing department, there are salary increases there for the assessor and her staff, um, much lower than the requested, um, but are still increases nonetheless. Um, the treasurer's department includes an increase in contractual and professional services, and this is because our accountants, um, we've asked to do, um, some, so work with our accountants on, um, the uniform chart of accounts will be changing, uh, in the coming year, and there are things that they will consult us on that will, of course, cost money, um, to complete those projects and to do those in the best interest of the township and in, in the best interest of the taxpayers. Um, and we've talked to them about some additional procedures, checks and balances, and other projects that we would like to work on to make sure that our financial, um, scanning is good. Sorry, let me flip. Engineering costs, um, excuse me, are predicted to stay about the same as they are, and that's for a monthly meeting that we have on our sewer infrastructure. Um, administrative services, of course, I, I just mentioned that that was moved to the superintendent's department. Um, board review, um, is seeing a slight increase in board of review of payments for each meeting that they attend. They have not seen an increase yet, because I'm aware in the ten years that I've been here, um, but that went up from fifteen hundred dollars to just two thousand dollars. Um, computer services remains about the same, and that includes, um, three things, which includes our contractual services with our IT company, repair maintenance of our equipment, and then all of the software that we use. Building and grounds is probably where you'll see the biggest, um, increase. Um, this is also where, um, the treatment of park lake should appear. I may need myself a note. Um, the, the ten thousand two hundred dollars that we, that we usually spend in newsletter costs in the administrative services department is being moved here. Um, you're going to see also, um, the replacement of some, an AC unit. Um, parking lot maintenance is in here, um, as well as floors in the township office, and parking lot paving project, I think that was a question earlier, of West Wausser Park, and that certainly is, is something that we can all discuss further if that's in the best interest, should move that project forward or not. Um, but the maintenance of our, of our parking lots is certainly at the forefront of maintaining and protecting its infrastructure. Um, you will note that in the center of the budget, you have, um, one oh one, three oh one, and one oh one, three thirty-six, is actually been moved to a public safety fund, so those are there for your reverence, but, um, they are not actually contained on those pages, they're contained later in the budget. Um, Department of Public Works includes, um, five full-time employees. Um, that is something that I brought to all earlier, um, with the rep, the pending retirement of one of our U P W workers, we'll need to replace him. Um, so, that would be five for a short period of time, and then we'll move again down to In here, you will also find, um, the replacement of a nineteen ninety-nine Chevy thirty-five hundred work truck, and the replacement of a Ford Escape, which is used as a township vehicle currently and driven by those, um, that do township business. So, those vehicles are needed replacement. Sorry, I'm on a little foot. Moving to parks and recreation, um, there are plans here for a full-time employee that will cover, um, this is, this is one of the items that you've not voted on yet, but maybe not provisioned full-time is the recommendation that I included here, with a full-time salary and a benefits package. Um, so that increases this line. Um, that can be modified if you chose not to take that route with the new, um, staffing I've already covered police and fire for you, unless you have questions, I'm going to move past those two. Um, all of the funds in the back contain both a revenue and then an expenditure, such as the cemetery. Um, our, our sale of cemetery lots and plots and the headstone foundations actually does well to cover its expenses, um, most of the time, and I believe that there is, um, an amount in there that currently can be used only for improvement of the cemetery. Looking at the senior center, um, this one was difficult to project as, of course, it's been closed for almost a year and a half. Um, in looking at this, I was able to, um, at, at an earlier time, they were doing really well with revenues, and bringing in at times, um, significantly more revenue this year. I comment only on the, the revenue that would be generated by meals that are being purchased by everyone. So, I, I estimated that at about twenty thousand dollars, and I believe that's low, they've been serving approximately fifty-five people a day. But in looking at the social distancing, I may have to reduce that number, so, um, I went with a more, um, conservative number of approximately thirty-five meals and a hundred and forty-five serving days. Moving to the farmer's market, you'll note that, um, there is money, um, in here for fundraising. Um, they hope to have the farmer for twelve piece next year, which is a significant, um, amount of their fundraising that they do each year. Um, on the rep, on the, excuse me, the expenditure side, there is no salary contained here, as I can, it's contained with the parks and recreation, um, line, excuse me, um, department. Um, but there are funds here for all of the other activities that they've, um, conducted in the past, including community promotion. There was nothing, um, I have, I have entered no revenue or expenditures in the DDA fund. And I'm sorry, this doesn't have page numbers, that's something I can correct for you as well. I'm just going to record on a page that I can. Uh, based on the action in court last week, um, I put in here that it was dissolved in twenty twenty-one, um, the fund balance, um, from that remains, but, um, at this time, I did not, um, schedule any, um, revenue increases or expenditures for that department. The police department has several, um, lines and funds that, um, account for auto theft prevention and, um, drug, um, fines, forfeitures, um, and, and drug, um, programs. Um, I won't go through those individually, as there is usually a set amount that comes from the state, and then it goes back out in training. So, they usually are, um, whatever is brought in, they usually spend on training the officers. The last fund that I'll cover is our sewer fund. As we saw, um, from the presentation that you had from, um, Mr. Jersey, uh, a couple of weeks ago, um, he presented their budget here, and that is then included in our budget as well, for our monthly payment for the fees, um, of the service that they provide to us. And that is done in addition by a revenue, um, which I increased according to the last, um, study that we have done by, it was at the time, it was called Umbaugh and Associates that now is bigger today. Um, I read, I went up, um, a dollar per the rate schedule that they made to us last time. Um, if we should receive the rate study from them prior to adopting this budget, um, we would be able to modify this budget at that time and with those numbers that they give The last two, um, departments are water and streetlights, um, and generally they take care of, um, for, um, tons of obligations for those utilities. Um, so those are, so, if there are questions, I'd be happy to, I, I know I went through it quickly, but.
I, I know we'll dig into this more later, but just a formatting question, what's the difference between the requested budget and the recommended budget? In most senses, they're the same, but on some pages, they're not.
At times, they are the same. Um, I request that all department heads, um, such as the assessor, um, police chief, fire chief, um, provide me with numbers they think that their departments are going to run with, um, in the next year. Ben, um, Z for, um, part, the parks department, and then public works, um, so it's, in general, it's usually a request from the department head.
Well, you're recommending to us is the final column on the, right?
Yes, that's correct, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two recommended budget.
Thank you, that's really helpful.
Can you put some more ink in the printer, because this is a little light.
A little bigger would be nice.
Bigger would be better?
Yes.
Darker would be better.
Okay. Page numbers would be helpful.
I had her new glasses.
Karen, um, I don't want to mean to tell you what, I'll do this, but, I'm not, well, I'm going to remind the board, because as part of the treasurer's budget, if you remember, uh, if you look at treasurer's budget, you'll see, it's actually, and we're talking about prior period adjustment, and what that is, the name of our Michigan tax tribunal cases that we have from the prior year. If you think about this, and this is a twenty-two budget, so anything that got done in twenty-one, you'll pay for in twenty-two. And, for instance, this year, we, we were budgeting significantly less, a lot less than that, that line, I am about half. Uh, right now, M P T cases for, for some apartments for the COVID types things for, for twenty, uh, we're going to pay for this year, and it's going to be about, out of our budget this year, it's going to be about nine thousand dollars. However, going forward, in, in two thousand twenty-two, you'll have the two thousand twenty-one cases. We are in a land of golf courses. And if you remember, our, our, um, state government shut down our golf courses and their, their halls and everything they had, and it allowed to the D P B to be able to take and apply for tax tribunal petition help for their taxes for the year, because obviously they weren't able to take and operate as normal. And with that being said, uh, they have, um, accepted the petitions, and potentially we have the, uh, we, we know right now, we, we have the potential at the township level here, we're going to, we're going to have to pay back, uh, about pretty close to forty thousand dollars, thirty with forty thousand dollars, which is, which is, 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 that's the right thing. You, you'll ask, and for the people in the public is asked, if they're asking about this, the schools are held harmless, and so the schools don't have to pay back anything, anything in the way of education, whether it's the schools, L C C, or the I S Ds, they, they're held harmless, they don't have to pay back, the state makes them whole. However, when it comes to. However, when it comes to the county and the townships or the villages or if it's a city, we have to pay their money back and it's a prorated number, but it's, we're looking at somewhere between 36 to the, I know what the number is, it's about 38,000. And it's been, it's been petitions and successful and we will pay that next year. I don't have a problem paying it. I think if this raises people who own these businesses, that's what the legislature did, that's what they voted on. Then we're all in this together. And that's the way I feel about this. That's part of our budget, the increase in the treasurer's line, it's about twice what it was last year. But that, that's our responsibility, that's what we've got to do.
And that's, that's in Department 253 Treasurer and as he noted, it's prior period adjustment.
This year's won't be so bad, we'll be under budget. Next year, we're going to be right out because we're going to budget for it, but it's going to be a bigger number. If you remember right, several years ago, Minor 30 Acres had a big tax argument of a case against Mr. Matt Meyer. And we settled out of court with that one and we saved a ton of money. We budgeted for 150, 160,000 dollars and we didn't even, we didn't spend half that. But I mean, that's, that's the law, that's what it is. As a township, we are responsible for that. Like I say, the school systems are held harmless, so what that means is they don't lose any money, which it should be that way. The schools should get their money for their own schools. And we have to be able to prove what we do and pay back for them.
Karen?
Sure.
We have to be done with this about the middle of December, correct?
December 15th, we have to hold a public hearing by December 15th.
By December 15th, just so we discuss that in the break again, that's the end date.
Each court I witness do this, does it differently. Some are done in November, some are done in December.
But we have to be done by December.
We have, we have to be done by December 15th. So how, is there any question to anybody like to put on how you'd like to move forward?
I would rather do page one, page one, that's the.
Okay. And we've done that before.
I know.
That seems to work well as per board members.
What about an hour before meetings?
At the next meeting, could you, an hour before, we could do a work session?
And start working that way.
And go page three.
And then we'd have to end up maybe more time later on if we don't get it done.
So you're thinking in two weeks?
Yeah.
I'd like a copy if I could. And I agree with you, darker? No, that's okay.
There's been a copy since, yeah, I was going to say Friday, so. Wasn't there a fund today on Friday?
It's under the day.
You did not need it. Literally. All right. But I can definitely, I do understand that it's difficult. This, last year when I presented, there was a green, a green and white variation that alternated. And you may have found that more helpful.
Yes, it was.
I would go back to that format.
Very helpful.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of options with the colors, but I can go to the green, I think it's green and gray or green and white. So it alternates so you can see the lines, you know, we have to use them where, or we can make it larger as well. Yes, I do understand that.
Otherwise I'd, I'd like.
I know. Ryan?
I won't be here at the next meeting, so I'd prefer if we don't do it then. At the end of the day, we got to move forward if we got to move forward. If it has to be then, that's fine, but if it can be not that meeting, that'll be helpful.
If it's helpful, would us, we have a software we call Doodle that surveys all of you for available times that you, and days and times that you might be available to do a special meeting. Would you like to do that if you'd like to see it sooner than the next meeting? Would you like a special meeting or would you like to address it at the next? I don't know how you want to do it.
Is that the only meeting you're going to miss during the budget season?
Yes.
Well, it's early for discussions.
But the time goes in a hurry too.
And we're going to cancel on November 1st meeting?
Yep.
Good reminder.
So you'll be gone on the 20th?
So you're only talking September into September. You don't know, well, October, you have all October.
Talking five meetings.
I was going to say that's, it's up to about five.
Just one question, I have this, I mean, this has been done in the past. I, sometimes things like this are better handled in one larger chunk of time versus being piecemeal. And so I'm just wondering how it's been done in the past and has that been effective?
Well, you're all willing.
I've seen, I've seen 10 of these, but I, yeah.
Nobody, nobody's ever 100% happy the way it is done. That's what the outcome, that's, that's the main thing you got to understand. But the thing with this is if you work out things a pain for an hour or so and things are a little bit contentious, you can take a break and go to something else. And you come back the next time and maybe things are, things, they see things a little bit different light. And maybe it works better, but every group is different. And I'm not even, I'm not saying any of this group, I'm not even getting to even guess what this group idea is going to be. But, but that, that, it just depends.
I've seen 10 different, I have, I've seen it almost 10 times and I've seen it, it's been 10 different ways.
It's been, and you know, you got a lot of stuff you got to look at here. You got a lot of change. You got a lot of things you're going to do different from when you did it back. Unfortunately, the topic's not growth. I like to tell you this, but that's my job. But, but it's, you got a lot of things you can do here. You got a lot of goods you can do for the community. You got people who want C I B items, you got people who want other things. And there's a lot to go on in the budget workshop. This is just a mountain, this is a bag, yeah, it's just a drag. There's a great line in here, but it's going to change by fact, you know.
Sure will.
It's, put the, put the past. But I mean, so that's, the more meetings you have, the better. And I don't have a problem having a spot for me, I don't care, so you're paid for. That's what I'm here for, I'm here to pay for you. Anything you want to do, I'm ready to do it.
Okay.
I'm looking forward to the discussions, okay. But I think in the way we did it last year, which I was involved in, where we had smaller discussions. So if you actually were out of town, you didn't miss that much. Hour discussion, two-hour discussion, come in an hour before the regular meeting because it's already on your calendar, so you can get here at five instead of six. Those things seem to work really well. But I like to recognize everybody in the beginning, there's a lot of financial horsepower set up here. And I want you all to know I'm going to use all of it, so regularly again.
So we will communicate with you and look for some times that might work for you. We'll try to find a couple of things that work for everybody and keep it so the public can access it as well. And so we'll do our best to accommodate all things and all people. But we'll try to whittle away at an hour, hour after time and then, and then see if you want to change how we proceed with it.
I like your comments about the public because I was the public when we did budgets for our inset.
And we're actually going to make copies, we made copies for people. We'll continue to make copies and it's available online. Some people were working for, we'll make copies for people anytime they come in or we didn't, we didn't even mail it to them. So we try, we try to be accessible to everyone.
Any other comments?
Take my mask off.
There you go.
You can always go back.
Any other comments, recommendations, whatever? Okay, we're going to move on to items of action, which is the 21 tax rate request.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Before you, you have a prepared, a bounty for taxes for the 2021 tax rate request, otherwise known as an L 4029. It has to be prepared, approved.
You didn't hand out copies of the order, did you?
Oh, well, that was my.
I got them all.
When we have the paper, you can make your copy.
Yep, if you want to do the write-off. I don't think about that.
My apologies. It's, it's inserting a bunch of things into a bill, you're telling it to merge it all together, apparently it's.
Too much.
Yeah, it didn't, it didn't go.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so I'm sorry. So just for your background, Assessor Beck, he prepared the following form and he made Treasurer Whisthawser and Clerk Brendan Butler-Challenger reviewed it. And then it said, it's in your packet for consideration. So as soon as we have those, we can look at those. But it contains the township operating. It contains police and fire millage and it contains the library village.
So we're going to have action on that tonight?
We do, yeah, it has to be announced by September 30th. You're fine.
No, I just have to check so it's still started.
Oh, okay, is it?
No, we're going to go to the other side.
Okay, Mary?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we do the 2021 tax rate request, L 4029.
What's happening? Was there a motion made? Can I second it then?
Certainly can.
I'm going to then, I second it.
Any discussion?
This rules baby a lot.
The last thing that I had was bottom line needing that she's got the charter, she's got the police and fire and the public library. Those are our villages. Okay, and from those villages, we garner the top, the top fund of the tax liability of the 479 million, right?
This is full tax liability, all, all three.
All three, no, just correct, no, that's what I.
If you look, if you look at 20, that's what, I penciled, they took and made a copy of mine and I penciled it together. If you look at 20, it's 18,989,007, 678 difference from what 20 was. And what that means is you had, you had these properties that either were split or sold or built or new businesses. You got a couple of new apartment buildings that were going to go off. So I'm saying let's make up a big chunk of that, 18 million. And that's real personal and has a long property. So what that is, is that's property that is, that's every piece of property that we basically have in that township. The only thing that's going to be different for 2023 than 2022, you'll see a difference. This year, the food bank, 2021, or 2022, then this year for 2021, you're going to see the food bank down here is going to be taxed. Because they're a 501(c)(3). However, they did not, their earnings did not take and file their paperwork in time through the Michigan State Tax Commission. And so they will be taxed for a half a year's taxes at the time of assessment before the building was done. And by law, they have to pay them this year. Starting next year in 2022, if you wait to 21, they won't, they won't pay a dime other than special assessments. They have to pay special assessments, they have to pay the grain commission fees or anything like that that goes through. By law, everybody has to pay them. So that will come off there, but there's really not that much on there. You're not going to see much of a reduction down there.
Okay. We have a motion, we've got a second.
Yes.
Any other question?
No, we've got a motion on the second right over there.
No?
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes? Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fields Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Amaruji?
Yes.
Mr. Benzey?
Yes.
Mr. Wissler?
Yeah.
Oh, how was London? Yep, thank you. What you have in front of you tonight is for your acceptance, not for your approval. We will accept this and place on file if you're so inclined. The resolution on the Bath Township Public Library Village proposal dated August 18th, 2021. And this of course aids in our preparation of the L 4029. But the Bath Charter Township Public Library intends to pursue a village and a new village, excuse me. I shouldn't say new, it's a renewal.
It's not, but a renewal means that it's, when you say now, you're asking for 10 years, right?
It's a renewal, it's at the same rate as the previous.
Same rate, but longer 10 years instead of every four.
It's considered a renewal, yeah. Just a longer period of time. Okay, so they forwarded us the document and that is in your packet, I hope, after watching the 4029. And I wanted you, because you have not dealt with this issue as a whole, but as independents and as residents over the years, I can find additional detail, but we have agreements in place to levy, collect and disperse that money to the public library. And you'll note at the time, trustee, Field's Bliss was actually the treasurer of the library at that time. So that agreement was signed by him as well, so. Those agreements remain in place.
Okay, we did.
Oh. Trustee Lewis, you've got a question?
No, I just should have, I realize now during conflict of interest, I should have stated my spouses on the library board. I'm saying for the record, I know you know. So with that, I would make a motion to accept the village.
Any discussion?
All right, vocal? Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes? Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fields Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Amaruji?
Yes.
Mr. Benzey?
Yes.
Mr. Wissler?
Yeah.
Ms. Howe?
No.
Thank you, we'll accept and place that on file.
Okay, that's for that. Do we have to report?
Thank you. I wanted to report on Thursday, September 2nd, 2021. Judge Schlegel granted the Township Board's motion to dismiss the case of Will White versus Bath Board of Trustees. Judge Schlegel denied Will White, Mr. White's motion to intervene and Judge Schlegel's decision resolved all pending claims and enclose the case. He has a specific amount of time to appeal, of course. And our legal counsel is finalizing the seven-day order, which should be finalized shortly. And our legal counsel is finalizing the seven-day order, which should be finalized shortly and then signed by Judge Schlegel. If Mr. White fails to appeal in a timeframe, then the case will be settled and over with. I just wanted to note that in public. Many of you attended the case in court, but I don't think there's been any official announcement of that, so I wanted to cover that for the public. Our new planner, Miles Robler, began last week. He has quickly made good work of organizing the office and getting to know everyone. I believe he's been already meeting with developers and residents of the township. And doing really well and fitting in very well, of course. He and his fiancee look to move to the township here in the next, I believe, week or so, or a couple weeks at the latest. But so he'll soon be a member of our community. I'm actually glad that the heartbreak, Rob House was brought up. That is actually being demolished. Unfortunately, asbestos was found and we tested that for asbestos. So there will be some asbestos abatement before the demolition can proceed. But currently, Pitch is the company that won the bid to demolish the house, is obtaining the permits that they need, the soil erosion permits and the demolition permits they need to move forward with that. And it will be returned to basically filter and it'll be graded so that we can plant seed or do whatever it is that we embark on next with that. But most likely, it'll just be grass for the time being. An update on Farm to Fort Fall Feast. Unfortunately, due to COVID, that group has decided to cancel that event. I do think it's a smart decision, but it's an unfortunate decision, as that is one of the major fundraising events for that group. They are looking positively towards the summer of 2022 to host some type of event, like a summer feast or something of that nature. So I'm excited to see what they come up with and bring to the community. Safe Routes to School continues to make progress. Today, our group met, led by trustee Amoruiji, so I hope I'm not stealing your thunder. But they set dates for a walking audit of our sidewalk infrastructure, and they also scheduled a kickoff meeting. Both of these events will take place at the beginning of October, and we will begin promoting these events to the community, most likely with a summer bill insert that will be going out tomorrow. So we're very excited. They have some concrete dates that we can promote to the community and have people come out and join us for those, because I do think it'll be a great improvement for our children that are walking to school. I'm sorry tonight for the lack of documents being left out of the board packet, but I always strive to be better, so hopefully budgets will be in bigger print and alternating colors and. We're gonna put some make in the printer, trustee Benzie. Yes, I will. So and I'll number those pages so that we can all have an easier time communicating with each other about what's on the pages. Any of you have questions, I'm certain.
Oh, I got one. How, did they tell you, are they on schedule to get the house done?
They are. The soil erosion permit, I believe, was submitted today. Okay, so the wall this week. Everything's moving forward well. I don't think there are been any surprises in addition. I think we suspected there was asbestos in the building. We just didn't have confirmation of that. It's unfortunate that we'll have to abate that before we can proceed, but of course, that's for everyone's safety involved, so we'll take care of that. But yeah, it's proceeding well.
Good.
Thank you, Karen. Yeah. Public statements.
Under the audience interaction. Okay, my first question is, who is gonna answer my first questions that I asked in the beginning of this meeting? Or should I not expect to get any answers from those? And if not, then why should I ask the question?
So I think I can, if you don't mind.
No.
Oh, I love it, yes.
So the one I recalled and I didn't answer, I'm sorry, because I was just talking about the house, was the board of trustees approved purchasing that house, I believe, in late 2019.
Okay.
So the board approved that, but it was the previous board in late 2019. And we just were able to purchase it from Mr. Gupta, so there was no public.
You know, I was all for it personally, and as, you know, former Parks and Rec, I was all for it too. I just wondered, you know, where did that subjective argument come from? And I understand now that it was a closed-door meeting, and something that important and that expensive should have very well had a, you know, public feedback at least. And I just, I wondered, where did you get the money to do that? It had to have been $100,000. And did we get the property along the lake also?
No.
Which I think was more important than the house, but.
And I think, believe, there were several board members that would have agreed with that statement, but we were not able to. He split that piece off and did not have that piece for sale.
I mean, that would be perfect to increase the size of the boat launch, too.
We agree.
Oh, before I forget everything else, I want to thank you for doing a great job. I think you're doing fantastic.
Thank you.
And Taylor, too.
I will answer your question about, I did not include any CIP projects. I presented the budget here. It's my opinion that we should maintain what we have as a first. I do understand your arguments about Wisswasser Park. The problem with the limestone currently is the way that, there's more to the project than just the paving, but it's the grating as well.
Right.
The actual, the parks is lower, and that limestone often will run down in and create a very slimy surface on the sidewalk. And we actually shovel the lime that kind of settles in the sidewalk. So we're looking to also improve the grade.
Either that or the drainage would be perfect.
Yeah, so it encompasses it with a paving.
Anything we can do to not have asphalt would be fantastic.
And at this time, for me, I won't say anything but limestone, but the limestone's creating a problem as well. It's creating a very slick surface.
Crushed asphalt would be another alternative.
So we'll look to do.
Or not crushed asphalt, excuse me, crushed concrete.
Concrete, okay.
Yes, that's something. And I guess as long as you and I are talking, what's going on with Parks and Rec?
So I did not have time prior to this meeting, but I will be bringing back a proposal along with the budget. I include the numbers in the budget, but it has to be approved in order to carry through. Would be to, my intention would be to hire someone that's in a full-time position that would encompass both Parks and Rec and the farmer's market. But board members have asked for a more complete plan in order to move forward with that.
I just see something, you know, and you may or may not, this is my third question is gonna be coming up next, but I want to help. You know, I'm a lifelong citizen here and I applied, I was asked to apply for a Parks and Rec appointment. And Al, and Brenda, and Stephen, and Joe, all voted no. And I just wondered, am I a pariah or should I? There are six other vacancies here in the township. Planning Commission, Housing Commission, Public Art Commission. You know, I'd like to help, but should I not, should I not do anything if I'm gonna be voted against? And is there a place I can put a plaque? Because I think I'm the only person to ever have been turned down to volunteer for a committee.
No, you're not the only one.
And just for human betterment, is it something that you feel I wasn't qualified? You know, I've got decades of experience. Stephen, you're the one with all the answers tonight. How about if you answered that? Why did you vote no against my opponent?
Why am I the one with all the answers?
Oh, you just told us. You said, "If you have any questions, feel free to ask." And I've known you your whole, you know, our whole lives, so just give me some insight. Tell me what I need to do to improve myself or?
I don't think it's about, I think it's about the group as a whole, with Parks and Rec ethic, if they're looking at redoing things, it's no longer the Parks and Rec.
Right.
With what they're doing here, they're looking at recreational.
I only landed on, I have not landed on.
What are you talking about?
But it would provide.
I don't even know what the name of it is.
Yeah, it would, I know.
Well, as I just, as we were waiting patiently for this time to ask questions again, I diligently looked on the website and there's still two vacancies on Parks and Rec.
That's correct.
But the proposal that I have floated so far involves combining Parks and Recreation, the committee, because it's no longer Parks, it's Recreation and Farmer's Market.
Right.
Combining those two committees.
When I, it has to have been about a decade I was on Parks and Rec. We never did anything with recreational activities, like zumba and touch football and stuff like that. So what I would recommend, and that was one of the reasons I applied, was because I wanted to help reorganize and put some emphasis on parks and green space, like the county does. I mean, that's what the county has, parks and green space. And the new position that you want to fulfill, I think that would be a great opportunity for somebody to have the recreational side of it. Somebody to do the, you know, the community efforts to get people into touch football and to adult basketball and zumba. I see all the other things at the community center. So that was it.
Did I answer your question?
Not really, but. So should I, I guess the bottom line is, should I not apply for any of these other positions?
Definitely should apply for anything you want to apply for.
Okay, and when will we find out, or how will we find out if we're not appointed? Why weren't we appointed? Do we not qualify?
I would say we're doing it right now.
Okay, and have I found out yet?
I don't know. I don't think we know what we're doing with it. That's my complaint.
Okay, that, you know, if somebody would have said, "Hey, you know, we really don't know what we're doing with it."
What, you got seven members of the Farmer's Market, Ryan? What have we got? Seven members, eight? Seven members of there, and what do you got on Parks and Rec? Another seven?
Two vacancies, well, two vacancies.
If you're combining two boards together, you can't really put 14 people together. And you're not gonna really accomplish a lot when you do that, because you're not gonna have much of, you're gonna have a lot of different ideas.
Well, I guess to gain the public's respect and.
You talked about parks, because parks are no longer a part of Parks and Rec. Parks are all controlled by the DPDW and it's part of the township.
And that's something that, why would you take that away from the public?
We're in a new phase here. People like myself, who's been here for a while, we're doing new things and we're coming up with new ideas, and we're trying to digest this and figure out what's the best way to do it.
Well, I think the best way to do it is have advisory committees and. I just want to apologize, because I feel like I've done a disservice to you and to my fellow board members by even making the motion, knowing full well that we were going to dissect our Farmer's Market board and our Parks and Rec board and then create a new structure. And so I feel like my fellow board members, their actions were in service of not adding something to it, but maybe that was inevitably going to be dissolved as we were going to form a brand new community, I think. Well, I hope you understand my position. It was like me jumping for a carrot in the total darkness. You know, you don't know where the carrot's at. So how do you know? How do you know? So, Mr. Hockley, please blame me for that. No, I'm not blaming you. You'd be the, you voted for me. I mean, if it was a straw poll vote and you knew Parks and Rec was gonna be no more, why would you do me the disservice of not appointing me? Just say, "Well, we're going to reorganize this," you know, and to be very blunt, I was hurt. I've done 20 years of community service here for you people, all of us people. And yes, Park Lake, I harp on it a lot, but it's gonna be here long after we're all gone. And it is, I keep saying this. Yeah, oh, I know, but I'm using up the other two minutes that I gained on the first one. But anyway, so that was my quandary there. And I still, you know, I think you could have done it a lot more eloquently than how it was done, or how it wasn't done. But anyway, and again, I want to thank you, Karen, because she's been around. Thank you. Sorry, take it off.
It's quite possible that Ben's gonna need some advice from the community as we look at Parks and Parks expansion. And so I would encourage you to, encourage Ray to continue his community service and his passion for the community and give him some hope. On the senior center, I think a vaccination clinic is a great idea, especially when boosters are available to our seniors. So we can offer a clinic with the health department for boosters and then hopefully catch people who have not been vaccinated at that point. But my biggest concern right now is the Delta variant. And I think the only way we're gonna catch people is to take their temperatures. And I would like to add the protocol that when they pay their money and they sign in, their temperature is taken. We know if you have a temperature, you gotta go home. Just my own opinion. And then also, Karen talked about reducing the number of people that we seat so that we can increase social distancing and that that might reduce revenue, domino effect. The senior center is licensed for 85, and if we do reduce the number of people that we are serving, we are still getting 55 people a day for lunch. That doesn't mean that they can't still come in and get their lunch and go home. I do not want to discourage our seniors from getting a great nutritional meal at a great price from people that they trust, because we've reached our capacity as far as seating is concerned. So I would hope that we would encourage people to continue to come to get their meals, even if we've surpassed our capacity for seating. And I was also going to ask, when are we going to hire a recreation director? Have we, or a leisure time coordinator? Have we set a timeline for that?
The position has not been approved.
Right, so is that two weeks coming back to the board in two weeks? Uh huh, okay, good.
And I was gonna say before, I know I'm taking up your time, but I know that you had brought up the issue of having clinics, chat clinics, and I do appreciate that you were pushing for those and that it's coming to fruition, so.
I just think it's a great idea. And then, and looking through the budget, I can't find that $77,000 that we captured for the DDA. And so I wonder where that money is and who it is assigned to, under what department? My experience over the last 12 years working with the planning board, I'm sorry, but the planning board doesn't really function very well when it comes to community-based projects, which are citizen initiatives. I mean, if you want to buy a fire truck or if you want to do something that is considered a capital improvement that doesn't involve necessarily a citizen initiative, that's different. But the planning board doesn't do very well with citizen initiatives. So I would hope that we could find a place for that DDA money where something would happen that is driven by the community. Thank you.
My name is Meg Ritchie, and I'm on Outer Death. There's a few things I, excuse me, I'm kind of a rack. Mr. Benzie, you mentioned you weren't in your Lazy Boy earlier. I was in my Lazy Boy earlier, watching you all on my telephone. So I got up to come down to make a statement for the second portion. Two things that really kind of stuck in my craw. And one of them, as Judy just brought up, was the mask, the masking at the senior center. And you all have mentioned that you feel like this is hard for you, or this is a tough situation. Well, this is tough on all of us. And it's time to stop putting it off and hoping that someone is gonna come along with a better idea. People are making hard decisions all over the place. You know, people are making their own policies, restaurants, schools, universities, they're all stepping up and saying, "Okay, you don't have to get a vaccination. We're not mandating you to get a vaccination. But our policy is, if you are going to come into our facility, our restaurant, our school, then you agree that you have done that." Also, along those same lines, I thought it might be a good idea that if we're, if we were doing testing or have a policy at the senior center, to maybe also make that open to the public, where people could have a tent outside or overhang where you could be tested, just for the community. To, let me see my quick notes here. But I'm not sure if I'm correct about this, but I'm thinking, is your next meeting in November? Not two weeks? Okay. All right, forget that part then. Also, something that happened earlier in the meeting was Ms. Hildebrandt was, I read part of the packet this evening. I could not obviously do the budget. I wouldn't know what I was looking at even if I did. But the part about Ms. Hildebrandt, the change in her job description without that being brought up to the general community, to the public, and I know you've already taken a vote on this and passed the changes to where she doesn't even answer to the supervisor anymore. If anything, I would just ask that you revisit that, that maybe you rethink that. I, her job requirements might not be for the public to decide, but I think the changing of her job requirements, should, the public should at least be notified. So I'm going to ask that you recall that vote and rethink it, maybe revisit it in two weeks if we are currently at that meeting. And one final thing was to back up Judy on her request for non-action of the Park Lake, just about everything that they asked for. You know, weed control, the path around the outside, the non-motorized vehicle portion, and I'm afraid the list goes on. I, as I mentioned, lived on Outer Drive, so weed control is not even an option for me to buy in, whereas I know it is for people on other sides of the lake. They can buy in or get a weed control specialist to come by and spray. Me and all the other residents on Outer Drive, that is not available to us. It's just too filled in. They can't even get there to spray. So I could go on with that one for another hour and a half, but those are the three things that I wanted to touch on with you all, and that got me up out of my lazy boy to come down here, and I hope you take it with which it was intended. Thank you very much.
Thank you, man. Anybody else? Who's good? All right. We will be in the future, and I believe, or remember coming up, Park Lake, right guy? Jason, trustee Al Maruji, do you have a board member comment?
I do want to agree with part of what Judy said. I think her, that the process is broken. So I think it's the process, it's not the planning commission. And so I would, I would encourage us to take some time to finally figure out a good process when that does honor the time that people put into creating proposals.
Mr. Bensy?
So I'd just like to thank everybody for sitting through all of this tonight. You stayed a long time. For those of you that are up, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. No comment.
No comment. All right. I also want to thank everybody for staying, for the length of time. Man, that was really good to get out of your chair and come. I hope you'll do that more again. And others, Judy? Thank you. Yes. Have to go like this? But much appreciated. So thank you all for staying and for coming.
Just thanks for coming. No comment.
Ditto.
All right, you can vote for Mr. Men.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosecrans?
I couldn't do what you guys...
She's coming.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Oh, yes, here.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Philip Chandler, yes.
And then...